To order, it is Wednesday, January 7th at 7:00 PM. And this is our first regular meeting for 2015 of the Ottawa City Commission. Can we have the roll call, please?
Mayor Reed.
Present.
Commissioner Skidmore.
Present.
Commissioner Jorgensen.
Present.
Commissioner Dickinson.
Present.
Commissioner Kayler.
Present.
We are all here, present and accounted for. Thank you. So I would like to welcome everyone out this evening for the first meeting of the year for 2015. Happy New Year and happy, very, very cold evening as well. So thank you for coming out. Also, for those who might be listening on KOF or watching on the Government X channel, we'd welcome you as well. We'll begin the evening, the meeting this evening with the Pledge of Allegiance, and that will be followed by the invocation, which this evening will be led by Pastor Kent Matthews from Grace Community Fellowship Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's a privilege to be here. Thank you for inviting me. Shall we pray? Heavenly Father, I thank you that we live in a community that values prayer, but more importantly, values you, the one to whom we pray, who is our hope in this life, who is our only hope in the next life, and is our hope for building a healthy and fruitful community together. As we prepare ourselves to begin this city council meeting, it's appropriate that we thank you, that we live in such a desirable community, with such wonderful people that we can call our neighbors, that we have the freedom to govern ourselves and the right to be heard and the freedom to speak out for what we believe, that we have the right to vote, and that we are served by leaders like these that have servants' hearts, who serve in humility and in generosity of their time and their wisdom for us. Grant these our leaders the wisdom to see things as you do, the grace to value the views of others, and the humility to promote the needs of others. May your will be done here tonight, even as it is always in heaven. We ask these things for your sake. Amen.
Thank you so much, Pastor. The first thing on our agenda this evening is our consent agenda, which includes items six and seven, the agenda and minutes from the November 24th, December 1st, and December 8th study sessions, as well as the December 3rd regular meeting, December 2nd special call legislative dinner, and December 3rd special call city-county inter-local agreement land purchase meeting. Is there a motion?
Madam Mayor.
Commissioner.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The minutes and the agenda have been approved. And at this time, we would have public comments if we have anyone registered this evening?
No names.
Public comments? Okay, then we will, I will dispense with reading of that paragraph, and that will move us on to declaration. And so for declaration at this time, I'd like to give commissioners a chance to declare any conflict or any communication they've had that might influence their ability to consider this evening's issues impartially. Nope. Okay. So we will move right on into new business with item 10, please.
Your proclamation recognizing Martin Luther King Jr. Day.
Monday, January 19th, 2015, is Martin Luther King Jr. Day. Since 2002, the City of Ottawa has officially recognized Martin Luther King Jr. Day as a city holiday. Richard Jackson will accept the proclamation and also share with us some of the community events that celebrate the legacy of Dr. King. And so the proclamation reads as follows. Whereas on October 19th, 1983, the US Congress passed legislation making the third Monday of every January, beginning with 1986, the day America would honor Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. with a national holiday. Whereas on January 16th, 2002, the Ottawa City Commission made the King Holiday an official city holiday. And whereas this is the first national holiday to honor an individual black American, and whereas the King Holiday affords all of us an opportunity to reflect upon the past while seeking hope, determination, and an opportunity to act upon the promise of the future. Now therefore, the governing body of the City of Ottawa, Kansas, does hereby recognize Monday, January 19th, as Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day, and does remind all citizens to remember that the legacy of Dr. King lives in each of us, and we are responsible to promote, teach, and to live the American dream. Signed the 7th day of January 2015 by the mayor. Richard, if you'd like to accept this, and then the podium will be yours.
One, two, three, okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, for being supportive of the Martin Luther King Holiday and the activities that preceded. Again, this year, we'll have our regular celebration with our essay contest, and that'll be at the 2 o'clock on the 18th at Ottawa Municipal Auditorium. We'll recognize the winners of the essay contests. Our essays are down this year. We're down in numbers for whatever, for whatever reason. Actually, we got about 74, and about 90% of those came from West Franklin, where in past years, we've gotten over 100, 150. So we'll make some changes in that. It'll allow us to recognize a few more individuals at some of the, some of the lower, the lower grades. Trey Walker, a former football player at K-State, I guess a four-year, four-year starter, will be the speaker for the afternoon, for the afternoon event. And if you haven't heard Trey, I've said some of you have probably seen him play football, but he is really a dynamic speaker. And so I think that'll be a great opportunity, and I think the kids will enjoy it. Something else that we're doing this year, something we've talked about for a number of years, is Kevin and I, President of Ottawa University, and this year, we decided to see if we could make it happen. And that's a community-wide celebration at the university on the morning of the, of the 18th. And so there'll be some news releases coming out later, where we're trying to encourage churches and others in the community to come together in the fellowship that morning. I think with all the things that are going on in the country, and we, we talk about diversity in the community, and we talk about diversity around the country, I think this is a good opportunity for all faiths to come together. And I think many times, people forget that when we talk about Dr. Martin Luther King, first and foremost, he was a Baptist preacher. He was a minister, and I think sometimes that gets lost in his, in his legacy. So we'll, we'll have a program there. My pastor, Pastor Walker, will be speaking in the afternoon. We'll have a number of choirs and musical groups throughout the community and other individuals that'll be involved. Scott's over here, Scott's gonna be part of that. One of the things that we, we want to do is we want to do something for the community. We're gonna make this a community-wide celebration, so we will take up a love offering, and we put Scott in charge of, in charge of that. And we'd kind of like to take up a love offering and possibly give the money to the city to be used for your, is it Play City program or whatever that's, whatever it's called. We think that would be an idea to kind of tie that together for the community. And so if those are the activities, thank you, and hope to see other commissioners other than the mayor. We obviously the mayor, because they come and do the proclamation, but that doesn't mean the rest of you can't join in and be part of that celebration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll help.
Spread the word.
I think it's a great year to be doing the citywide event as well, so thank you for helping put that together. So item 11.
Amendment to Article 14, Commercial Zone Districts, Section 14-3, permitted and conditional uses.
This amendment is to consider changes to residential uses in the C4 business district, and we talked at length about this at our study session, but we're going to have Mrs. Lee come up and discuss this a little bit with us, so that the public can hear what it is that we're considering.
Good evening, Commissioners. Yes, be happy to do that. We, the Planning Commission, received a request from a property owner downtown who owned a residential structure. Basically, how could they demolish and rebuild that structure? Our current regulations require, and have for some time, that first-floor buildings in our downtown, our C4 district, have at least 50% of that structure be devoted to a commercial use. There's good policy reasons for that. That's to create a real vibrant commercial area. But the question really is, there's some, there's some periphery areas that that might work for and might not, and in this particular case, that's what they asked for. So the amendment that was considered was to add dwelling units without a commercial use on the first floor, but it comes with a couple of conditions. Once it does have to go through a conditional use process, just to be clear, because I wasn't as clear about that on Monday, or last week. In addition, that would be only for the properties that are not on Main, because on Main, we are very intense, even with this addition, to create that as commercial office, retail, really active, active spaces. But there are some areas along the edge where people felt like that might be an appropriate use. And, and as we discussed at the study session, and as we discussed in the public hearing, there are some properties in our downtown area that have remained vacant, probably for this reason. They, they were a residential structure, they at some point reached a level of deterioration that they were removed, they weren't marketable yet for standalone commercial use, and so they're vacant. And the vacant properties really don't do us much good, the community, the property owner, any of us. So this is a way to be, to add some flexibility to our zoning ordinance, and yet retain a process in which they would have to come for a plan and a review and a specific site-by-site location, look at it, review. In addition, they would have to provide one parking space per dwelling unit, and the residential, the lot would have to provide for at least 1,500 square foot of lot area per dwelling unit. Okay. Having said all of that, that is the specific recommendation, but as I told you, the Planning Commission further recommended, not in a vote form, but as a matter of reviewing this more thoroughly, that a committee be established to really look at the boundaries, what kind of standards would we want to have under consideration for a conditional use, so if somebody came forward, we could kind of give a little bit more guidance. And we're in the process of forming that committee now. But this would allow for that property owner to move forward, and it might allow for some additional properties to go through the same process and become conforming that are currently not conforming, because there are residential structures in this area. Is there any additional questions?
With this being a conditional use permit in order to, to build a structure like this, will the plat plan or the design of the structure come before the city commission?
Yeah, conditional uses all do come to you as well. So they would go through a review with the specific site plan, as well as what precisely are they gonna do and at what level. It could have even been that someone was willing to put in small commercial, but not to the extent of 50%. So there's any variation that could come into this. It could still be that they have some commercial plan, but limited, or for whatever reason, it's, it's not just on the first, but it's only a little of the first and something, you know, just a lot of variations. If somebody felt like they wanted to have their residence primarily on the first and yet still lease out other spaces, it might still have a mix, but not the full 50% on the first floor. The specific applicant, the person who asked for the amendment, their intent is to build just a standalone multifamily dwelling, whether that be two, three, or four units, that's yet to be determined, but that's what they're at at this point.
Wendy, on this too, you mentioned far as not on Main Street, and I agree with that, but does it also apply to the ancillary streets close to Main Street, or how does that?
It would be eligible. Now, most of those already have buildings that are property line to property line. So it would be unlikely that we would see many of those, but there are some areas that that might apply to. For example, along Walnut or over on Cedar, where there isn't a building adjacent, it might make more sense for someone to consider that. And if people were to drive around and look at how many residential buildings are there, they might, that's really who's probably gonna benefit the most. The existing ones, or where someone just felt like the existing building really needed to be removed, but they did think there was good value in that. I just today printed off an article about how important it is to have good residential in your, in your downtown and adjacent to your downtown. And we've actually always had that by policy. We've always actually had a higher density of residential permitted by our zoning ordinance around the downtown. So it could be that we put this in place and then come back and say, actually, there's a couple of blocks we just flat want to rezone. But at the, in the short run, we at least wanted to give this as an option. This was the simplest way to create that flexibility and open the door, and then spend some time studying a little bit further.
Couple words you used that I, I like, that you talked about being, our downtown being vibrant. I think this will help keep it vibrant versus, you know, and then the flexibility, it allows for people, businesses, homeowners, that type of thing, to have some flexibility instead of any sort of thing. Are there any questions or comments? Okay, then I would entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I will make a motion. We do adopt item number 11 as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the, to approve the amendment to Article 14, Commercial Zone Districts, Sections 14-3, permitted and conditional uses. Is there any discussion? Hearing then, could we have the vote, please?
How do you vote, Commissioner Skidmore?
Yes.
Commissioner Jorgensen?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kayler?
Yes.
Mayor Reed?
I vote yes. Motion carries. And that will move us to item 12.
A public hearing for the purpose of considering demolition at a structure at 323 South Walnut.
This public hearing has been called for the consideration of the demolition of a single-family residence and accessory structure, located at 323 South Walnut. City staff will present the details of this request to override the SHPO determination. At this time, I will open the public hearing, and it stands for State Historic Preservation Organization, correct, SHPO?
State Historic Preservation Officer.
Officer.
Or Office, if you'd like, because there's several people in there, obviously. This specifically now, this is similar to this past issue. It came about because of one property, okay? But this one, now we're just gonna talk about their ability to demolish the structure. So the property owner at 323 South Walnut approached the city for demolition at the same time they started talking about what could they put back there. Our immediate thought was, well, we've got a zoning issue first, so we pursued that, and in the meanwhile, started down the process of looking at the demolition possibility. Because our downtown has a district that, most of which is then on the historic register for the state of Kansas, any change to a building inside that district requires a review by the State Historic Preservation Office. This specific property is listed as a contributing property to that district, which means that at the time the analysis was done, and it was done on a property-by-property basis, there were enough characteristics by those evaluating for them to determine that it contributed to or enhanced the downtown district, to such degree that it should be protected. Because of that determination, it is not surprising then that the state's office made a recommendation that the structure not be demolished, that it be retained, and less than until the city commission holds a hearing and considers whether there's alternatives to that, and if there, that have been considered at least, and whether or not those alternatives are not feasible, essentially. So, little bit of history about the structure, and I'm gonna show you some pictures, and I'll talk to you a little bit more about the process. Yeah. Okay, this is the structure that, that is in question. The structure is, again, 323 South Walnut. It is immediately north of Old City Hall. In fact, oops, not the right. That is part of the garage that the city just recently sold. So this, if you were looking to the right, would be where Old City Hall is. So this structure, I believe, has two units, or has had two units in it for some time. Staff had been writing the previous owner about the condition of this since 2010, because there had been tenants who had made complaints about it, and thus requested that we do inspections and informed us of things inside. And so we communicated with the owner about our concerns, that if the deterioration wasn't halted, the only alternative then is demolition. Our, our letters really were met to no avail, although ultimately, at least the property did sell, so that we get somebody interested in making a change in some direction. So here's some pictures from 2010. And you can see, even at that time, there has been deterioration in the wood and in the foundation, and then particularly water. And as many of you know, water is actually one of the most destructive forces we have, and hence, it's usually our efforts to be sure that the very first thing you do is protect water from getting into the structure, because it'll continue to do damage, and that's exactly what we have here. These are just examples, I didn't bring you all the photos, but some examples of when the water gets in, it does damage to the roof, the ceiling, the structure, and then consequently, stuff starts to fall down. Here's some other ceilings that haven't yet, in 2010, had not yet collapsed, okay? But you can see they were, they were suffering even then, sorry, with, with damage. In addition to that, there's some electrical fixtures that were either removed because water was coming through them, which is not uncommon when you start to see that, but they were clearly not then available for resident use. In 2011, just some further deterioration, some additional evidence of that, and additional correspondence was done at the time. This is actually the porch, and we're separating from the wall of the structure. In this one, this particular time, they also were down in the basement, and again, the water damage is, is top to bottom, which doesn't bode well for the structure. And it appeared that the sewer had also backed up and not functioned well for the residents or the structure. This is some pictures from today. You can still see some of those same features, no, no, nothing's been done to repair, restore the structure, the same soffits, same, same movement. So walls, and both walls and ceilings, you saw different bow, bow movement that is pushing out or pushing in, depending on the wall or structure. So, general deterioration of the structure to the point at which this current property owner doesn't believe that it's financially viable for him to make those repairs and be able to have a structure that at the end of it is as valuable as the cost to repair it. Okay? So it'd be difficult for those who we have of the banking profession to get a loan on a structure that you can't back the loan with property that would sell for that value. So that, that was the owner's position. As you have in front of you a letter from the owner, we, we discovered today when we were over there, an additional window broken, so it's, in addition to all of that, it has become an attractive nuisance. If, if you decide at the end of this that you need additional time or anything else, we'll have to get the owner over there to do something. We believe that there is a possibility that people could be gaining entry to the structure, creating an additional hazard to it.
It was in the.
It was in the original packet that came down. Sorry, it was in your original packet. As the letter says, they own property across the street, do have a vested interest in the neighborhood, I think, which is precisely why they acquired it, because they do have an investment in the neighborhood and want to see that that be taken care of. As I told you Monday, in addition to the attractive nuisance, there's been other kinds of violations that occur there, which are not good for that neighborhood either. Back to the process, then. The city has overridden historical preservation office determinations before, particularly with residential structures in or near to the downtown several times. These structures tend to have less of a value on the appraised siding or anything else, so it's not gone through a real rigorous review like we have when we considered the building, that was a commercial building on Main, where we spent a great deal of time doing some analysis of both the structure and what were the alternatives. This owner's plan is to rebuild on the site, so it's not intended to remain vacant, but that's his preference to do a new building versus invest in this one. We had not had any additional communication with anyone who indicated to us that they had any reservations about this, so. See if anyone else comments. I don't think the owner made it. We had communicated again with him today, just, he was just, I think, anxious because of this additional window being broken out to proceed, so.
If I recall, Wendy, the multifamily unit that they rehabbed is directly across the street from this?
Mm-hmm.
And it's, I don't, it, well, it's multifamily.
It's like five or seven. It's, yeah, it's a number of units. They did a really good job.
And I remember that, that structure, when they started on it, it was, I was amazed at the, how well it turned out from that. And if they, if these owners feel like they can't do anything with this, I would have to, I'd have to agree with, with their assessment.
Yeah, they actually have remodeled and invested in a number of residential structures over the years, not all downtown, and for the most part, that is exactly what they do. They go in, acquire, and reinvest in the existing structure, and I think initially, that might have been their intent here.
Yeah.
But they got to a point where they just, it didn't seem as appropriate.
Yeah. And they, they keep their properties very attractive when, when they're completed, too, so.
Yes.
So at this time, I would ask if there are any other comments during this public Any comments? Last call for comments during the public hearing. Hearing then, I will close the public hearing, and we will move then to item 13.
Resolution providing for the demolition of structure at 323 South Walnut.
So then this resolution does provide for the demolition of a multifamily residence at 323 South Walnut in Ottawa to override the denial of demolition by the State Historical Preservation Office. As part of the resolution, the commission will provide notice to the Kansas Historical Preservation Office of the decision. Do I hear a motion?
Madam Mayor.
Commissioner.
I move to adopt the resolution as described in item 13 of our agenda.
And do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the resolution to provide for the demolition of 323 South Walnut. Is there any discussion?
I just do have one more question. This would all be at the expense of the owner, I assume, right, the demolition cost?
Yes, this is at the expense of the owner.
Good question.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I will be abstaining from a vote, as the owners are my husband's second cousins. Although I have visited with legal counsel about this, I still feel safe and feel in the effort of transparency to go ahead and abstain.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments? And can we have the roll call vote, please?
How do you vote, Commissioner Jorgensen?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kayler? Commissioner Skidmore?
Yes.
Mayor Reed?
I vote yes. Motion carries. Thank you. That will take us right up to item 14.
Resolution authorizing execution of agreements with KDOT.
This resolution authorizes the City of Ottawa to execute agreements with KDOT for the use of transportation alternatives funds for the East 15th Street sidewalk and bike lane project, and authorizes the city manager to sign all agreements. And I believe Wendy's going to present this one as well.
The current agreement that we gave, sent forward to you by the state of Kansas, actually does indicate the mayor would sign, so, and so I think Richard's preference is that the mayor be directed to sign this particular agreement, and the city manager any additional paperwork, because there's usually, there's usually more paperwork. So this project, just to refresh the public, is East 15th Street, from Main Street all the way to Lincoln, with a variety of improvements, depending on where you are. So it starts off with sidewalks on both sides of the street, but right there at Walgreens, there is a sidewalk, so the one on the north side starts a little bit further east, with the bike lanes also going on both sides of the streets, similar to what's on West 15th. However, when you get to Mulberry Street, the sidewalk and moves only to the north side, and that's because there's only a sidewalk on the bridge on the north side. So the sidewalk goes to the bridge, and then from the bridge, further east to Lincoln is a trail. As we told you, and I, I know the public is aware, this project is a grant project, our responsibility is to do engineering for the project. We're amidst that now, and we've already had our first public meeting with the neighbors to talk about any kind of conflicts they have, so now we're in the middle of the design itself specifically. So we would pay for 100% of the design, and then we pay 20% of the construction cost and the construction inspection cost. So that roughly works out to, we pay $85,000 of the total project cost, and the state pays 223 to get that entire within. And as you recall, the 15th Street overlay was actually amended a little bit because of this project, so that what we put down in striping would be on a fresher surface, so that it would be able to stick better, and we wouldn't be taking anything back up. So this, what we've asked for you to do now is just to sign the agreement with the state. They awarded these grants in the fall, and then we've been going forward, but they, they've sent us the paperwork. Bob's reviewed it, staff's reviewed it. It's their typical agreement, there's nothing in this that's at all atypical. And then from here on out, there would probably be some documents that maybe the city manager would be authorized to sign, and then we will be back with you to let you know how we're going with the design and when the next public hearing, uh, public meeting would be for, for those neighbors to come out and see specifically, how does that sidewalk look like? Bike lanes look pretty much the same, no matter where you are, but sidewalks move relative to public infrastructure or trees or grade, so.
So they're not moving sidewalks? They've just.
The sidewalk location is not consistently measured 18 inches from the curb line throughout the entire route. How's that? It measures and moves. In fact, we prefer for it to be several, you know, four to five feet from the curb, but there are occasions when that can't occur. And there are also places, because we have existing infrastructure that's been there much longer than this was considered primarily to Director Tharp's note, the powerpools, so we have to work around those kinds of things.
And trees? And trees?
And absolutely, trees, and on occasion, we've got some other things in that area that we have to watch for. We make it accessible, so if there's changes in grade, those kinds of things.
So, it is a very heavily traveled area with bikes and feet, and there have been some near misses. I know there's been one bad bicycle accident along there. My four children survived every day back and forth to school on bikes or walking, and then unfortunately, no accidents, but it's, I'm very glad that we're continuing our progress around the city with these types of things.
There's some other safety, school projects that would probably use this as the beginning of a step to get even on, and I just read another statistic today about, and when those amenities are there, the drastic reduction in injury when you have an amenity adjacent to the streetway, so.
Are there any questions or comments for Wendy?
Madam Mayor.
Commissioner.
I would enthusiastically make a motion to approve the execution of the agreements with KDOT regarding the 15th Street project.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been seconded twice. Is there any discussion? If not, can we have the vote, please?
How do you vote, Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kaler?
Yes.
Commissioner Skidmore?
Yes.
Commissioner Jorgensen?
Yes.
Mayor Reed?
I vote yes. Motion carries. Thank you. So, Richard, that will take us up to the report by city manager.
Mayor and Commissioners, I have nothing.
Okay, then we will move right on to reports by city commissioners, and I think we'll start to my left with Commissioner Jorgensen.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I do actually have something I want to discuss this evening. I was at a public meeting earlier this week and had a, had heard a question that was, had made a statement in a back, kind of a back-door method, that the city had purchased the property for this industrial park and had incurred about $2 million in debt with no sense of how to repay it. And I did want to address this, it's, you know, if these types of things are mentioned and they're not addressed, then sometimes they become fact, or, you know, with quotation marks around it. The city did incur temporary bonds of approximately $2 million to purchase the industrial park. And some people look at that as a risk, but however, it's not so much a risk when you consider that the bank can write a check and pay off the $2 million from reserves that we have already. It's a, it's a move to develop our infrastructure, much like building a sewer line for future growth, building a power line for future growth, a water tower, all things that we have done recently in the past few years. And putting together a group of land is in the city's best interest, and it does not create a future liability for the city to build upon it if a method of funding infrastructure at the site is not incurred. The property can be resold, and if a funding mechanism for the development of the infrastructure for the sewer and the power lines that are to go out there is not developed, such as the sales tax that we're going to be looking at a vote here later this year. If such a sales tax is not passed, the city has the funds to pay off its debt, and so the risk of our move is a calculated decision and providing for the future growth of our community. And I just wanted to address that, and the individual that had asked the question, I think, knows what the method was, but he was asking it in a way that he was playing devil's advocate, and I think that was more the reason of his question than otherwise. So, I just wanted to address that, and if anybody has any questions about the temporary bonds, feel free to give me a call, and I'll talk about it further with them.
Thank you. Very well stated. Commissioner Skidmore?
That's what I was going to say, well stated. I have nothing else to say.
Commissioner Kaler?
Well, I have actually a story to share, and my daughter is sitting here in the front row, and she is going to just not like it that I'm going to share the story, but I don't care. I, as a commissioner, sit among individuals who support another state school when it comes to athletics. And tonight happens to be in conference play in basketball. KU does pretty good in basketball. And this past Thanksgiving, we were in Texas, and we went to a trampoline park. And if you've ever been to a trampoline park, they do a dodgeball tournament. And my daughter, who is 12, got into a dodgeball tournament with the Baylor Bear basketball team. And not only did she win once, and I think the first time, they probably just let her have it, right? They were thinking, she's 12, we're going to let her go, but she wore her KU shirt that day, and they kept on calling her Hey KU the whole time. They didn't know her name, they just knew her as Hey KU. And call her Hey KU, Hey KU. So, she won the first time, and they probably played, I don't know, five or six games. She won three games of dodgeball against these massively big Baylor basketball team players. So, we are excited to finish up this meeting and go home and cheer on RJ Hawks and live in the fact that she not only won once, but won three times in dodgeball against the Kaler, or the Baylor basketball team, so.
Good J Hawks. Pretty cool. Thank you for sharing. Okay, Commissioner Dickinson?
I want to say hello. I noticed we have several members of this year's leadership class here, so good job getting your meetings in, the three of you. And I also want to note that the sidewalk project is just another good example of our staff. As commissioners, we try to do the best with the amount of money that we have, do the most we can for our community, and do it wisely. But we get a lot of help from our staff with their grant writing and some of the smart decisions they've been making lately. And so, it makes it easier for us to find these, to just be able to approve some of these projects that without this grant, we really would not have been able to complete this project. So, just a thumbs up to them for their hard work on these projects.
Okay. You all have had such good things to say. I don't think I can add anything to it that would be any better. I would just like to remind everybody to try to attend the Martin Luther King Celebration. Those kids, you know, deserve to be heard, the ones that have put the effort into writing the essays. And I especially appreciate the citywide event that we'll be doing in the morning. I think that now of all times, as Richard said, this is when we need to pull together. So, I would just encourage everybody to watch for those press releases and try to attend that. You also have on your announcements, we have a regular study session on the 12th, and we have a special call with City Commission Franklin County Summit Meeting on the 14th. And with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Madam Mayor.
Is there a second? All in favor, say aye. We are adjourned.